I call the Henry County School Board meeting to order. This time, we will have our poll call.
Mr. Acker.
Here.
Mrs. Durbin's here. Mrs. Flanagan, here. Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
And Mrs. Whitlow.
We have an empty chair. A chair that used to be filled with a very vibrant man who had wisdom and strength to carry on the responsibilities of being on this board. We lost him this week very quickly. We didn't have time to say our goodbyes, but we know that he's in a far better place than we are. I worked with Mr. Zayer. I loved his humor, and I loved his A to Z. If you want to know what that is, you can ask any members of the school system, and they will be able to tell you. Mr. Zayer was a very practical individual. He was always working for the students of Henry County, for the teachers of Henry County, and for the administrators. I personally will miss him because we worked together as teachers, and there were times that I didn't always get his joke. There were times that I just had to simply say, "Okay." We lift him up this morning. He's not here in person, but he is here in spirit. And for that reason, we are going to be able to endure and move on with the work that is before us. Thank you, Mr. Zayer, for all your kindness and your love and all of your humor. At this time, I need to have the approval of the agenda. Mrs. Flanagan made a motion. Mr. Martin, second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We would like to welcome all of the visitors here this morning. We hope that as you have come to recognize what the school board does, and also, we want to be excited about your awards as well. So, thank you all for being here this morning. Would you please stand? And as we do that, we do a silent prayer. Please remember Karen and Ryan and the others of Mr. Zayer's family. Let us pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I am assuming that no one has signed up to speak this morning, so we will move on to awards and recognitions. Mrs. Adger.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We are excited this morning to recognize two different student achievements today. The first, I'm going to ask Ms. Donna Hicks from Career Academy to join me in sharing with you. Code VA is a state organization, and they have a special award to share with one of our students, Logan Cerber. So, Logan, if you'll also come forward. Ms. Hicks is going to share a little bit about what Code VA is all about and what Logan did to earn our certificate as well as a laptop from Code VA.
Code VA is a fantastic partner for computer science in the whole state. They had a contest in the spring. It was, you had to create a data selfie, and you had to think about privacy and how you share your information. And the challenge was, how do you share information without, you know, putting it out there and making it really obvious and oversharing? And Logan has been in my class for two semesters. She's taken cybersecurity fundamentals and cybersecurity manufacturing. And she entered the contest and drew a self-portrait, and I hate that I don't have it to show you. We'll share it with you later. And she used binary code around her face to describe her characteristics and aspects about her. So, ones and zeros. And it looked just like her. She's quite the artist as well as the computer scientist. So, she had ones and zeros around everything, and it actually codes to describe characteristics about her. So, she was sharing without obviously sharing, and she won for the entire state. I don't know how many submissions there were, but she, we got recognition towards the end of the school year that hers was the winner for the state. So, we're very proud of her. She is a great computer scientist-minded student, and we look forward to seeing great things come from her in that field. Would you like to share anything?
No, I'd be happy.
Okay. Okay. Cool.
So, look for her to go do something great in the career field at the end of next school year. We also have a group of students from Magnavesta High School with us this morning who have achieved at the state level for FFA. So, I'm going to ask their instructors to come forward and help as we give them our achievement honors, but I want to read their name and their state achievement to you as they receive their certificates from their instructors. All right. Third place Vet Science at the state level, Claudia Phillips, Emma Nestor, Cooper Owen, Justin Ford. And we're going to ask you guys just to stay on stage until the whole group is there. Third place Food Science, FFA at the state level, Jasmine Diaz Trinidad, Casey Mead, Jackson Shively, Kasha Cox. Fifth place Nursery Landscaping, State FFA recognition, Shelby Rigney, Tucker Roach, Delaney Burris, and Grayson Lawson. Tenth place Livestock Judging, State FFA recognition, Avery Brown, Sadie Perry, Austin Gammons, and Haley Chitwood. Tenth place Flora Culture, State FFA honors, Mallory Casor, Abby Moxley, Jordan Beal, and Addison Bryan. Twenty-fifth place in the Hippology category, Maggie Brown and Claudia Phillips. I'm sorry, Kimberly Davis. Sorry. And now for Claudia. So, we have some students who are standing in front of you who are actually graduates, and they competed after graduation. They all earned State FFA degrees. And so, the first person on that list is Claudia Phillips, then also Cooper Owen, Sadie Perry, and Avery Brown. So, we'd like to congratulate them for that. All right, you guys, and I know you couldn't do it without your instructors. So, I'm going to ask you to get into two rows, and then we're going to have them join you for your picture.
This time, we will take a five-minute break.
Hi, Barry Nelson at GR Chevrolet in Stanleytown. We've got a brand-new 2022 GMC Canyon AT4. That's hard to come by. Got two of these in stock. Brand-new 2022 Silverado, hard to come by. Come get it at GR Chevrolet. You want a good payment and a great price? Got a 2020 Silverado double cab here at GR Chevrolet. A brand-new 2022 GMC Duramax AT4 four-wheel-drive double cab. That's what the world's looking for, only at GR Chevrolet. Got a 2014 Silverado lifted with all the bells and whistles, big-boy toy, only at GR Chevrolet. Come get it. And we've got trucks here at GR Chevrolet. We've got over 135 used pickups to choose from. Come see us. We've got more trucks than General Motors, maybe not. Come see us at GR Chevrolet, where everybody knows cars cost less.
We've been here for 25 years now, and we built a building that was bigger than what we needed when we, when we first started. We've just about filled that place now. One of the things that we really do is we value our employees. We know it takes a long time for them to learn the skills, but people's skills are hard-earned, so we make sure that there is a job for them every day of the week, 52 weeks of the year. So, even if we're quiet and we don't need people, a lot of businesses still lay people off, send people home. We don't do that. If you want to come to work, we will find you a job because we value the skills that you've learned with us, and we want you to stay here, and we want you to feel valued. And we want you, as a family, to go home and think, "I'm always going to get a paycheck if I turn up to work for Drake."
This time, we are on the consent agenda. Is there anything in the consent agenda that we need to pull out? If not, I'll take a motion to approve. Ms. Whitlow made a motion. Ms. Flanagan, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it is approved. We're now on to the action agenda. This is approval of updates to certain VSVA school board policies and regulations on second reading.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We did share proposed policy revisions during the information session at the July board meeting. The revisions reflect efforts to bring policies and regulations into compliance with new or existing laws, or they've been revised for editorial reasons. Policy revisions were recommended and verified for legality by the Virginia School Boards Association. The revisions are presented as a second reading, and it is recommended that the revisions be approved as presented.
Anyone have any questions? Then I need a motion to accept. Mr. Bradley made a motion. Ms. Flanagan, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. All right, the next is the superintendent's report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I will go ahead and let Ms. Culture play our highlight video. This edition of Superintendent's Highlights featured a student summer preparing for the start of the school year in the area of high-quality instruction. Classroom teachers from around the division participated in a variety of workshops to prepare for high-quality instruction in the fall and spring semester. Social studies teachers learned more about the inquiry design model that they'll be using with students, and English teachers participated in the Pema Arts Workshop, learning more about poetry instruction in the area of high-quality professional. Finance team members have been reviewing contracts, setting up payroll, and prepared to assist support groups for the new school year. The human resources team has been supporting substitute orientation, new teacher orientation, and onboarding new employees. We were excited to welcome new elementary, middle, and high school teachers at New Teacher Orientation in the area of safe and innovative learning. A new work order system has been instituted. Transportation team members have moved to their new office and garage space, which is centrally located. HVAC and boiler upgrades took place at FC and Center for Community Learning. Cable cord received an outdoor facelift. Doors have been polished in preparation for new visitors and students. Ninth-grade iPads have been set up and distributed to schools. New probation boards have been installed around the division. A water heater replacement took place at Magnavesta. Mulching has been completed on several elementary playgrounds. There's an upgraded parking lot space at Asset High School. Teacher of the Year classrooms at Career Academy, FC, and Ball Park have received upgrade, and furniture has been removed and replaced with upgraded items in classrooms around the division. In the area of family and community engagement, upgraded signage has been provided to schools around the division, and power school involvement and system integration work has been completed. As you can see, summer has prepared us for an inspired school year.
So, we are very excited to get back to school. As you know, there's a lot of work that goes on, and we would ask for more and more time to prepare. Summer seems to go by very quickly each year, but I would like to remind everybody, since we have people listening in the media here again, that volunteers are welcome in school, that to remember that to be a volunteer, you have to get a background check, which can take some time, so please go ahead and start that process as soon as possible. Also, the importance of being involved in your child's education, and as a community, we want to thrive, and that does entail us all being involved. You know, they all say that it takes a village, that we want the community and parents to be involved with their children and what they're doing in schools. And then just to be mindful of the patience that our staff has had with us, that our students have had, and our parents are going to continue to have, because we are still having, we still have vacancies. We are still asking people who are interested in teaching and driving a bus and be serving as a very professional in our schools to take a look at our list of jobs that are available, and if interested, please apply. Substitutes are very, very valuable, and I was asked again yesterday, as I traveled around the county, do you have to have a bachelor's degree to be a substitute? And so, you do not have to have a bachelor's degree. You do have to have a, you have to be 18, you have to have a background check, and the drug screen to become a substitute. And there's an onboarding process through HR, but you do not have to have a bachelor's degree in order to be a substitute.
Just high school.
High school diploma. High, high school diploma.
Or GED.
Or GED, yes. So, we hope that people will take interest and become subs. And I know several of you have served in those positions and know that it's very rewarding to be a substitute. And also, I would like to take this time, as Mr. Acker says, excited as we are about school starting, that, you know, it is, it is also a very sad time for school to start. Mr. Zayer was very excited about school starting and getting back to summer normalcy, and, you know, he couldn't wait for the Friday night football games to start, but he had recently said that to me. And I would say that as a student, I first met Mr. Zayer in eighth grade, got to know him very well in eighth grade. We all knew who he was, but as you entered eighth grade, he always said, "This is World G with a big Z." And I know almost everybody who went through our school system, at some point, had Mr. Zayer, made the people sit in the room, had Mr. Zayer as a teacher, and remember him saying that. And as he so affectionately called himself the Big Z over the years. But, you know, he taught us all about civic duty and civics and world geography, and then he carried that out by serving the board supervisors and the school board. And continued, but I, and as Mr. Acker said, his most proud topic was to talk about his lovely wife, Karen Zayer, and his three children, you know, Tanya, Ryan, and Kyle, and the grandkids. So, just want to say that, yes, Mr. Zayer, you know, we're saddened to hear his passing. And if you all have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Just for the record, you mentioned volunteers. Are we still paying for X amount of volunteers per school?
I'm going to let Ms. Flanagan, because she's been, she can give you an update on where we are. I'm not sure we have a lot of people. We, we actually have, have repurposed those free background checks over the last several years. So, the school division does still continue to provide 100 free background screens, but we actually use those for volunteer coaches at the secondary schools, both middle schools and high schools, because it's so important to get those coaches in, and they're volunteering their time, so we don't want them to have to pay for the background screens. We also use them for background screens for support group members who are holding officer positions, so the top five officer positions for parent-teacher organizations or other support groups. And then we're also using them for free screens for student teachers and interns, because that also helps us with recruiting teachers, you know, as they complete their teacher preparation programs, if we can get them in to do their student teaching in our schools.
So, is that something we need to, in the future, look at increasing from a financial standpoint, budgeting more money?
At this point, no, but if we see, you know, a major increase in the number, you know, we can talk, we will surely keep the board informed on how many volunteers. I think, I think Mrs. Verlich is, is she doing most of the volunteers? Yes, yes. Tanya Verlich, Human Resources Coordinator, handles all the volunteer process. So, we will update you all on how many we have and how many slots we have.
No, I'm just saying, you know, of course, we're looking for volunteers, and a large percentage of it, you know, we talk about parental involvement. We don't want to be a deterrent. If we, we know we can't finance all of them, but, you know, if we could budget X amount of dollars for, you know, several volunteers in our schools, then I think it'd be worth it.
Just quickly echo you, Mr. Bradley. It's, it's one thing for us to ask people to help us out, it's another to ask them to pay us to do. Any other questions? I'll take a motion to accept the superintendent's report. We don't have to do that. Okay. Any matters from the board?
Do you want to start?
Do you have any? I will start with our new member.
I just want to welcome everybody back to school. I hope that everybody is excited as I am. I went to Magnavesta yesterday as a parent, and I saw a lot of smiles and excitement from the teachers, so I'm prayerful that that continues. And I just want to thank the maintenance department. I think the superintendent's report shows just how much was done this summer, and they are still working very hard.
Is there an update on positions that are still available, or are we?
I, I look at Ms. Flanagan, because I do know that we had one.
And I know it changes daily.
Yes.
Yeah, changes daily, and, but just to know that we might have something in place today, but it can so quickly change, and then classes have to be moved around, and so just for the community to be understanding in that, that is a process, and y'all are still, I'm sure, taking it on and going each day.
We, we are. The labor shortage continues to impact us as it does all school divisions and all employers at this time. Our, our licensed positions are, are in much better shape than they were, you know, a couple of weeks ago. We do still have some licensed vacancies. We are seeking to either fill or find long-term substitutes or, or other solutions for those. If, if anyone is interested in teaching middle school, we do have a few middle school opportunities as well as special education. And so, we're, we're trying to get all of that in place, you know, within the next few days, and then we do have quite a few classified vacancies. So, if anyone is looking for paraprofessional positions, bus driver positions, or any of those other roles, we have quite a few to fill still. But our principals have done a tremendous job of, of recruiting, interviewing, and getting positions filled over the last few weeks.
And I know y'all have been working diligently too, always reaching out. So, I did, I just appreciate everybody and what they've done to get school started this year. It's going to be a great year.
Mr. Bradley?
I have, I guess, an instruction question from our board round last week. I noticed that we are, I guess, for lack of a better term, implementing standard-based learning. And when I read that, you know, I was just concerned, had wanted to get a little bit more clarification as to standard-based learning. I know it's, we had teachers to go through some training, and my concern is, you know, as I've always stated, are we adding something else to the to-do list? But then, when I look at standard-based learning, it kind of mirrors what we have been doing for years with looking at the standards, unpacking the standards, and then writing our lesson plans from that. So, how is this any different than what we've already done, or is it some?
And those are all good questions, and if, if anybody wants to come from instruction to Kim before she gets here, I will say this, that, you know, and Ms. Durbin may echo my thoughts, but as the years pass, we realize a lot of times that many of the things that we've done forever foundationally with the different positions, as people leave, we call that institutional knowledge leaves, and we have new people who come on board, new teachers, new principals, and they don't understand, like, as you're talking about many things that we've done forever that are, that are just good practices. But when we look at, and I will, I know Ms. Durbin probably has, she could probably talk for hours on this, but if, you know, we're very passionate about children, teachers, actually, like you said, unpacking standards, teaching those standards, teaching with rigor, assessing those standards with rigor, but then the understanding that we all have. So, as a parent, I should understand, like, not just that my child has an A in math or an A in English. I should, as a parent, be able to follow, and I know I'm leaning more into standard-based grading, but as you're standard-based learning, you could get into standard-based grading, where as a parent, you know exactly where your child needs to grow and where your child has, has mastered that content. And, you know, we, over the years, sometimes grading or what's happening in the classrooms hasn't been interpreted that way. So, yes, it's, I'll give it to Ms. Durbin, but no, it's, it is best practice of what we've been doing. We get these back to our roots. Yes, and it falls right in line with our differentiation and everything that we've done with differentiation. And what we are starting to do with our teachers is really honing in on those standards and what does proficiency look like? What does it actually look like when a child masters that standard? And so, then we have that consistent proficiency across all schools, so it becomes a fair and valid system. So, no matter what teacher you have, which school you're at, we all are, are working towards that same proficiency standard. And then we are, like Mrs. Zayer said, we are also reporting out to parents, "This is exactly what your child knows and understands and can do," our KUDs, which is right in line with our lesson plans, like you mentioned. And it's, it's a progress, a process that we're working with our teachers. We're starting with kindergarten, and I told the kindergarten teachers when we met with them this summer, "This is a year of learning, and we're just going to learn this year. That's all we're doing. We're not putting anything else in, in place that's new. We're just learning. We're putting systems in place that's going to actually help them." They're going to be part of every part of this process. They're going to give us feedbacks. There might be multiple iterations based on what their feedback is, but there will be, teachers have total input in, in our direction with this. And it is research-based, and we know that setting goals with students, and that has a huge effect size, letting students know, this is, when you, students know exactly where they are in their standards, where they're supposed to go, and where they're headed, and this is how I'm going to get their, their learning increases. And the conversation becomes about learning, not about, "Hey, I need to get 100," or "I need to get an A." It becomes about, "Hey, this is what I know. This is what I used to know. I'm going to go here, and now I've worked and done this, this, and this to get here." So, it's all about mastery, and the conversation turns into learning. And then that helps our teachers too, because we can actually identify, "This is where my students are. These are where my students are, and this is what I need to do to move them forward." So, the whole conversation changes, not about grading, but about learning. And as we change reporting and grading that way, we also have to make sure we're instructing that way. All of those pieces work together. We have to instruct, and we have to assess, and we have to report all that same way. So, we're learning. We're working with Marzano's research, and we are, we, our principals have learned. They spent some time in a workshop this summer. Our kindergarten teachers have spent time with us this year. I've spent time, my team's spent time, and we are just excited about moving forward in this journey. And, and again, it goes back to like the why. And the why is because when children leave our system, they should have attained skills. It's not just an A. They can, they will know exactly what skills they have and they can use those skills. And parents, I mean, to me, that's just so important that, that parents do understand. And as Mrs. Durham said, starting in kindergarten and just going back to this and then building each grade each year, and people will understand the skills each child has. It is best for the children. It is not about a grade.
Yes. And I wish the focus could stray from the E honor roll, the A honor roll, the A-B honor roll, because that tends to be the focus each nine weeks and parents seem to really take that, "Well, my child didn't make the A honor roll." Do you want them to always make the A honor roll? Are they being pushed? Like you say, it's about the learning because students who make the A honor roll and have that great GPA when they go to college, you know, what our A honor roll be is not always consistent with what, say Northern Virginia's A honor roll student is. So we really need to take that focus into learning and, and pushing those students to, to their ability levels and quit focusing so much on that honor roll.
And our, and our teachers could sit down at any given moment and say about every child in their, in their classroom, what skills they have or do not have yet.
Yes.
Because they always have the mindset that they will get there and they'll provide the scaffolding for them to get there. But sometimes the child themselves doesn't know. And that's why it's very important is when you say, Mrs. Durham said it's research-based, that, you know, children knowing where they are and, and a setting knows also how important that is and they can get there too, but parents knowing. So yes, your child has a grade in math, but does that mean they can just skip count by twos?
Right.
But they can't skip count by fives? And as a parent, when you know, "Hey, my child's master skipped counting by twos, but not by fives." And so what am I gonna, you know, or they can't identify the letter M. Okay, when I'm riding down the road, you know, I'm gonna help them. You know, how, parents are always asking how I can help. And with standard-based learning and teachers are translating that to parents, you know, and volunteers come, it's just so much simpler for all, for Mr. like, all the pieces fit together. So it's not really anything new, but it is our roots of, you know, differentiation and what's best for students and research-based.
And several of the teachers that I've spoken to this summer and that I've worked with, I remember one of them got onto our meeting and she's like, "I'm so excited we're doing this. We're going back to what we are used to." I don't know if you guys remember, those of us who have been around for a while, we used to have that kind of reporting, some of us who were in elementary, we had that thick report card.
And we got rid of that report card because we went to a computer system and you couldn't do it in the computer system at that time. And now Power School has also changed where you can report that way.
Yes.
Because we had to, yeah, we had big pieces of paper and you mark. I'll try to remember when you were in school, the big pieces of paper that said everything you could or could not do yet. And the computer didn't allow for that. But now it does and so we're gonna just go back to reporting it that way.
Technology's on board with us. They're gonna be working with us to set Power School up like that so teachers can still use the computer, record their students' learning. I'm not gonna call it a grade, to record their students' learning.
Learning. And it's much more information for students and for parents.
Yes. Sorry, I said a lot. I'm very passionate about it.
Yeah, and I know one thing you mentioned in the primary, so I guess my concern is making sure that we communicate this, market this, because it appears the way we present, this is a process.
Yes, sir.
You know, and so, you know, we start in the primer, but, you know, secondary.
We haven't got there yet.
So, you know, you know how it is.
Yes.
The panic button. You know, we have a tendency to hit that panic button and, "Oh, we got something else we need."
Well, it's in the infant stages and we are starting with kindergarten and like I said, this is our year of learning. We're not putting anything into place. We're gonna make sure we've got our ducks in a row. I don't anticipate us moving into secondary anytime soon, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we as school board members love you and hope you've had a great summer and hope you'll have a great year this year. And if we can help in any way, just let us know.
Thank you, Ms. Alker. I want to echo, of course, my colleagues who've made those wonderful backstory remarks. You know, we're very happy to have you back, very happy that our professionals and their dedication to that and, you know, the HR department and trying to fill everything that all this, making it so trying to get our schools in order. Of course, I do want to echo the comments on Mr. Zayer. I'm not gonna belabor the point because it's probably two most common comments, what's going on and let's keep it moving, Ted. So I'm grateful that everybody is committed to finding out what's going on and keeping it moving in Henry County schools. One thing I did miss last month, by the way, we missed you, Mr. Alker. See, you left me until chair meeting. But one thing I forgot to say is I wanted to thank Mrs. Hatchett for her help with the resolution and getting the delegates and all here in order. I thought that went very well and I was very appreciative of that. And of course, the media for coming and present and also receiving your orders. But I also want to thank Mr. Minter, came to the V S B A conference on education, presented on our career candidate programs. I thought that went very well. But yeah, those are, those are my highlights. I just wanted to say, thanks again, Mr. Minter.
I'm looking forward to this school year. I think it's gonna be a great year. We've had some downtime for the last couple of years and I think we're ready to move on. A couple of announcements, September the first is our monthly meeting and that's at six. And make sure you put it in your calendar, October. That's also if you think you need that six. Do not forget about the V S B A Annual Convention in Williamsburg. If you have not let Mrs. Ramey know, you need to do that before you leave today because she has to have an idea of how many people are going. Plus, we do have a very distinguished guest in our midst this morning, being the president of the V S B A who is on our board and we need to support him 100% in going to Williamsburg. Okay? Alright, we need to go into closed session. We need to deal with following items. 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for discussion of appointments and separations of personnel. 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia for discussion and consideration of recommendations for special placement students, non-resident, and religious executives. 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia for discussion of pending legal matters. And I need a motion to go into closed session. Alright, Ms. Flanagan made the motion. Mr. Mark in second, we are now going upstairs. Oh, I forgot to vote. Sorry about that. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay? We are gonna stay down here.